I call this meeting in Tacoma Park City Council to order. A clerk please call the rule.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Council comments? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several short items tonight. First of all, I wanted to let everyone know that I am in the Federal Emergency Management Administration training for emergency planning today and tomorrow. This is for community leaders. It's interesting as we go through this training to see a great deal of similarity about what we've talked about through the past several years, actually, I think, starting in 1999 with some of the year 2000 training. And, of course, with the terrorist incidents, the importance of emergency planning has risen in priority. But one thing that has struck me as we've done this, going through the training today, is the perception that the trainers have that the community members are not as fully prepared as they should be, that it's same basic needs that people should be preparing with a kit so that they could depart in a hurry if they had to, that would have the essentials, and for having at least three days of water supply in case of an event. In fact, last night's, or Saturday's storm, what day was it? Sunday's storm. Sunday's. Sunday's storm actually caused some, you know, many power outages, some of them are still in the, around the community, but that affected the water treatment plant in the District of Columbia that caused some water shortages. And if they have to entirely shut down a facility, they said that the minimum is three days that it takes to bring it back online. So individual members having a three-day supply of water is critical because there will not be other assistance that they could bring in quicker than that. But the other thing that struck me in this training today is that not only is it the community members that are perceived not to be as well-prepared as should be, but also municipalities, that the perception of the trainers is that the many municipalities, and I think it certainly relates to us, feel that they can depend on the higher levels of government to take care of everything. And they emphasize that it's just as important for every level of government to prepare for their communities because if there is a major event, as may be possible, based on the changing weather patterns that we see, and also the rising threat of terrorism, that every level of government should be prepared to deal with their own communities. Next item ahead, I just wanted to mention that Pat Lovelace is again ill tonight, not going to be able to make it, but sends his best wishes for the council for our August And then I wanted to thank Susie Ludlow and Barb Matthews and city staff for bringing the speed trailer back out and getting it into operation. I saw it here on Maple Avenue this week, and I appreciate that. I think that it does help raise awareness in drivers that they need to watch their And then I have had several questions after the news item about the outrageous salaries that are being paid and, or were being paid in a city in California. And I've been able to answer these questions to varying levels. I certainly know how much our city council members make and our mayor makes, and they're don't, they don't approach the outrageous numbers in California. But I haven't been able to answer the question for some of the department heads, and so I was wondering if maybe you could send us a list of the salaries and compensation for the various managers in the city. Be helpful. And then lastly, I thought it was interesting that with the power outages that we're experiencing right now, that there's a lot of discussion about, you know, people coming up to intersections with no stoplights. And, of course, we all know that the law is that if the stoplight's not functioning, that the intersection should be treated by drivers as if it was a four-way stop. But I see that some jurisdictions actually have temporary four-way stop signs that they put out during the power outages, and it seems like a fairly low-cost solution that reduces the danger and also minimizes the work for the police. I know in Montgomery County, they said that they are calling people, police officers in off of leave to direct traffic, and I think these portable stop signs would be a good solution for Tacoma Park. Thank you, that's all.
Did the deputy city manager have anything more to say? Okay. Councilmember Robinson.
I've been looking forward to this meeting for some time because I'm anticipating going out of town afterwards. And I'm looking forward to the five weeks we'll have off. In the last couple of days, folks have approached me about the climate change situation we're in, and with two questions, really. One is questions about Pepco, and I wanted to refresh my memory about what we had talked about la, I think it was last week, that I remember an idea came up of doing a kind of a, an analysis of the physical plant, of Pepco's physical plant in the city.
What I proposed was that we would get the District 20 delegation to get Pepco to come to a forum and answer questions like the, what is the state of the Pepco infrastructure and the city age, quality, as compared to the rest of Montgomery County and the state, and also to understand why we're having so many power outages, and what could be done to rectify that situation.
Okay. I think that, I think we have a number of ideas and some gripes as concerns Pepco, and I think that that's, I think it's a good idea to ask the District 20 delegation. I also think we might be well-served in gathering up all of our grievances and all of our ideas and trying to methodically work through them, whether that's another citizen committee or task force. I remember also that it had been discussed briefly at the TFEA, the Task Force in Environmental Action, meeting, that there might be some spinoff committees. So I just wanted to place that out there, that we can, I think it's a good idea to work from the, with our colleagues in Annapolis in trying to get a message to Pepco, and I also think it's a good idea to work on our own to clarify what it is we want and what we perceive our problems to be. And the other kind of greenhouse notion that was brought up was a question now that the TFEA, or Task Force in Environmental Action, has submitted its report about how aggressive we will as a city be as we approach these issues. We have, there again, we have a lot of ideas, we've got a lot of action items from the task force, and I'm looking forward to having a good discussion and having a commitment on acting aggressively, whatever that means. So I think that there are people, constituents for all of us, who are looking for that answer as well. That's all.
Councilmember Clay.
I have a few things. One of them is about the Highway 410 repaving. What I understand from our Public Works Department is that if we don't get it in the process pipeline now, it's not going to happen before winter, and we're going to go through another winter of vehicular damage from the poor condition of that roadway. So I would like to ask that we put this on the agenda as soon as we come back from our recess because if the outcome is that we're going to fund it because we're not getting any movement from state highway in this year, we need to deal with $150,000. We'll have to do that with a pretty fast turnaround and probably have to communicate our intent to Public Works in that first week so that they can, they can get it together. We'd have to, we'll have to do a budget amendment, it'll probably have to be voted on twice, so it's going to be a process to get it done in a timely manner so that we can fix that road. It's not getting any better. I want to thank the staff for returning some of the recreation numbers that we asked for and talked about last week and make a clarification. So, I don't know, it's been two or three weeks ago that the staff sent out a note that the recreation camps for that week were at 95% and maybe 94, I can't remember the exact numbers, but about 95%, which is great for that week. And then the question that I asked back was, you know, what is it like the other weeks? And so the response that we got is Camp Tacoma has 30 people and the other one has 31 people, but that really doesn't mean anything because I don't know how many slots that there are. All I'm, the answer that I'm trying to get to more basically is, so 94% compares to what? Are we usually at 80%? Are we usually at 50%? Does it vary throughout the, does it vary throughout the summer? I'm just asking sort of what that means in the story, not like a, not a data chart of how many people are enrolled in each camp, just that's, so there's 95% this week, that's great, but what does that, what does that mean to us overall? So even if the answer was generally over the course of a summer, we're at 80% for all camps for the summer, I mean, that would be at least something to compare it to. Or for this camp, we're usually at 50% or so, you know, something. I just, I was just wanted to know, like, what does that mean? So before we go out and get like a whole chart of every, every camp that's been offered this week and for the last five years, I really just want to know what is the 95% mean historically or for the, for the summer.
Sure, we'll get to that. I know that more information is coming, your work is being gathered, but.
I don't know, I'm nuts. I just. No, I understand, no big chart. Yeah, we're just asking for context.
I will say that the camps have been very full, and that is greater than in past summers, pretty much across the board. And it's been very gratifying for us, but we'll get the details on it to you.
Yeah, that would be terrific. So today, I heard that there were a lot of people in the community that have been without power and people sleeping in the basements to stay cool. And I don't know that we really have a way to message to folks, especially if they don't have any power, what they should do if they are too hot in their houses and, you know, need some kind of cool place or air conditioning. I suppose they call 911 if they have a non-electronic phone. They know enough to spend $7 at Target and get a red dial plug-in phone. But I think that's something that we should put on the list. It's come up a few times now with the snowstorms, and this is the worst heat experience that I've ever had, actually, in my lifetime, but here in the, in the East Coast, it didn't, it didn't get hot like this in California in the same way. So I think we should think about how we can message that to people so that they could be safe, whether it's a snowstorm or a heat emergency, radio messages, that sort of thing, and think about how we'll do that with the heat out. Maybe that's, you know, refrigerator magnets or something like that from public safety. So the people, if 911 is the answer, if they know that it's okay to do that if their house is too hot, and also to encourage people to check on their neighbors. So I have two constituent issues that haven't, haven't been addressed, and one of them comes from some folks in Forest Park area who have been doing the survey about power outages. And their survey is about people who are having power surges that are ruining their home appliances. And they had an impression, I think, that either the Public Works Director or the Housing and Community Development Director were going to take action on the information on the survey. And so if we could get a report back to the council about what's happening with that and then report back to the group that's been collecting all the data, they're interested in doing more legwork if that's what we want, to get better data, but we should, I think that we, the city should respond to them. They've done a lot of work, and I think it's been really helpful to us and continues to be a necessary thing. And the last one, actually, I have two others. So the, I have also some inquiries around code enforcement issues in the Forest Park issue, Forest Park area as well, and ongoing issues with yard maintenance and poison ivy in the yard, and people hanging their clothes out to dry in their front yards, and those folks feeling like they're not being responded to. So if you, have you seen those emails?
I have not, but I'll double-check on them.
I'll forward it to you so that we can have a response to them. I didn't get the first round of emails, so I didn't see it until, this part of it, I didn't see, I didn't see the poison ivy and other parts until today, so I'll forward that to you. But she attached other, other emails that she had sent previously, and feels like there's not a response that's coming. And the last thing is, we have two buses parked out back. So we have a Purple Theater bus that's parked out back every day. Do we have a partnership with this group, or are we just letting people park in our backyard?
It's a, it's an agreement with them to, they transport kids to their camp, and then the person who drives it lives close by, so it's parked here. And then we get some reciprocal assistance in the library with the rec. department for that.
Okay.
Use of the space. I mean, it's, it's free space in the evening, it's not restricted, a restriction.
It's just not random camps that are using the?
No.
Okay.
No, people, people.
That's fine, I just curious.
We get a request letter each summer for that.
Okay. Well, I made an inquiry earlier, but I didn't get a response, so. And the other bus that's there that has, that's, that's not the bus and not the recreation van, but it's something in between that?
That's the new rec. van.
That's the new rec. van? And how many people does it seat?
I don't know.
Does it require a commercial license to drive it?
I'm sorry?
Does it require a commercial license to drive it?
I, no.
No? Okay. That's quite a van.
Haven't seen it.
Have you been in it?
You authorized the purchase of it?
Well, I guess I didn't have a picture of it beforehand. I didn't realize that.
They showed us pictures.
Yeah? I didn't pay attention. I didn't realize that was what it was going to look like. Okay.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah, well, so I wondered, what was it? It's new, it's here, and I looked at the tag and it says LG. I thought, well, we must own it.
We do.
So, okay, that's the new rec. van. Great. Thanks for the info.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mayor. On the subject of emergency preparedness, there was something that I got to, came to mind as my wife and I and our dog were huddled together in the basement of our house yesterday afternoon, right after, while the baseball game I was watching on television was interrupted by an emergency announcement indicating that there was a tornado warning. So I sent this missive to my two listservs and said, "Let's close the doors and go to the basement because, just my luck, this could be the real thing." And I peeked out the window to watch trees, and fortunately, none in my block came down. And I think that frankly, from what I can tell, the city of Tacoma Park was extraordinarily fortunate because from what I hear, areas like White Oak, Hillendale, and points north up around Randolph, Cherry Hill, and places like that, my wife was out trying to do some shopping earlier today and found that businesses were closed everywhere. And I talked to a business owner who has a restaurant up on Lockwood Drive, somebody I've known professionally, who said they're in the process of trying to salvage as much of their inventory as they can because they don't expect the power to come on for at least a couple more days. So what, the reason I go into all of these words is just simply to realize is that, you know, we spent a lot of us, well, we lost power on our street. It came back on this morning around 10 o'clock. And so we opened the windows, and as the sun went down, we sort of said to each other, well, what are we going to do? The only thing that seemed to work in the house were the cell phones. And so pretty soon, we were getting out little candles to read by, and I said to myself, how did Abraham Lincoln ever do this? Because, you know, and, and we all end up getting reduced to sort of a very primitive state in a matter of seconds, you know, trying to get fresh air, you know, thinking, oh my gosh, we better not open the refrigerator door, I can't communicate with anybody, even our hard-wired-in landline phone didn't even work, which I thought was going to work when the power went down. And then we worry about all these things. It brought back memories of when I was a kid, living in Baltimore, we had summers like this, and you just opened the windows and you lay there, and you sweated a lot. And you somehow or another, everybody managed to go to sleep and then get up the next morning and go about what they had to do. And today, we are so acclimated to all the electronics and the air conditioning that we have, we've become so dependent on it, and we always realize this when we have one of these kind of situations like we did in the blizzard in February. But we forget how, how easy it used to be for all of us to cope with these things when we didn't have air conditioning and all these other electronic assets. And so that brings me to the point of what I'm trying to say here is that an awful lot of emergency preparedness is preparing ourselves to live like our parents and our grandparents lived, to learn how to cope with a lack of certain things that we think we're all entitled to on a daily basis. And, and I think we, this is one of the ways we need to address emergency preparedness, all of us, whether we live in a high-rise condo or, or in a single-family house. And, and it brings to mind that when sudden things happen, as fast as this did, where a 20-minute storm, by estimate, dropped the temperature by 25 degrees, we, the, the way you communicate is that you talk to your neighbor, just the way our grandparents did. And so I think, you know, when you get down to emergency preparedness, not only is high-tech processes, are they important, but also the very lowest-tech processes are important. I've said this before, and I'll continue to say it, at these, on these occasions, is that we need to be able to stay in touch with our neighbors, we need to have a system of keeping, when these sorts of things happen, have it systematized so that we can look out for each other. And, and so that will help reduce anxiety. And if somebody, like Councilman Clay was just saying, is in a place where they can't get windows open and they can't cool off, that they have resources that they can get to. It's not as simple as I'm making it sound, but I just think that it's something that really is, we, these so-called surprises keep happening. You know, a few weeks ago, it was an earthquake, albeit one that we could all make fun of and laugh about, but it was an earthquake for Pete's sakes. Who knows when the next one's coming? I mean, and it just is like that. We're always surprised, and that's the nature of our, our lives. Moving on. Some things that I want to talk about in Ward 6 that are of particular interest to Ward 6 residents, that there's three traffic circles that are under construction, two on Wildwood Drive, and one at the intersection of Kirkland and Kennebec. They're all in process. The two little, and I just want people to know this because while I put information out on the listservs in our neighborhoods, a lot of people aren't connected to that for some reason. And I really urge them to, to, to connect so that I have a way to get information to you. The two circles on Kirk, on Wildwood, they are still in the process of being engineered, they've been partially built. The Director of Public Works has informed me that she is working with engineers to figure out the best possible way to finish the surfaces of those two circles so that they have a slope to them that will keep cars from driving straight over them as opposed to around them, but also be of a low enough slope to allow school buses and fire engines and things to be able to pass over them without too much difficulty. And she hopes to have some, some dollar figures and some proposals for materials on how that would all be finished. So that's where those stand. The sidewalk process, the, the city is in the process of hiring an engineer to design the location of the sidewalks along Wildwood Drive, Erskine Avenue, sections of Kirkland and Jackson and Holton Lane that would probably end up being built probably sometime after the first of the year next spring. There will be community meetings, the Director of Public Works has told me, during probably the 30% design stage, to get input on the location and design of sidewalks, so that's important to know. I've also had some good fortune in being able to persuade the Maryland National Park and Planning Commission to replace the water fountain that's been kind of missing from Becca Lily Park for the last two years, and they promised they're going to put a new one in there this fall. So those are some things that are going on in Ward 6, and I think that's all I have to say at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Wright?
I'm hoping that the Power Surge Survey can be part of the, I won't call it a Day of Reckoning, but the forum with Pepco, and it can be one of the things that we put in our list of questions to them in advance, and we share with them and ask them to come back to us with a public answer. So I look forward to working with you on that. I think in the previous email we did get, I think from Kathy Plevy, there was, on a previous, one of the earlier very hot days, the police station was identified as a cooling station, and maybe we should just make that more consistently clear to people. I'm hoping, I didn't see it on the rolling agenda, Mayor, I'm hoping that we have a time scheduled soon into the fall to discuss the tree ordinance. I know you're working on the, the schedule, and I know that's an issue that has come up and people are interested in discussing and giving the city staff some guidance on giving us some revisions to make decisions on, so I hope that can come up soon. And then the last thing is, just in tornadoes, remember to open your windows, not to close them.
Now you're telling me.
If you open your windows, then your house stays intact. If you close them, it implodes because of the difference in pressure. If you close them, it implodes, because of the difference in pressure.
Wow.
I think there's actually differences of opinion on that, but.
I think you're supposed to close, open the windows and go to the basement. I mean, definitely supposed to go to the basement.
I got half of it right.
And I've just got a couple brief items. I just want to let folks know that I had a very interesting and long on-camera interview with a gentleman who is doing a, a film that he anticipates will be shown to middle school and high school students. It's being filmed in Montgomery County, and it's on the subject of democracy, and kind of how democracy is working at different levels in our society, how it's working, how it's not working, how people feel about it, how, how all kinds of issues affect it. And so it's, it's an ongoing project. I'm not sure when it will be finished. He wants to come back and film some more, so if anybody gets contacted by him, it's a very interesting project, and should be quite interesting for middle and high school students in this area. I also wanted to just mention that I went to the Council of Governments Board of Retreat this weekend, and had the chance to have some good in-depth conversations with a number of other officials from the Washington region, and look forward to getting some additional input from folks from other jurisdictions about the ways they're doing things and how we can cooperate. I had a chance to talk with the Board Four representative from the District Council, Muriel Bowser, and I'm going to have some more conversations with her, and also a couple Montgomery County Council members, and others as well, and it was a very, very productive time. Are there any other Council comments? I see Councilmember Robinson poking, poking the button.
Yes. Oops. Whoa. I'll just say that we're going out west to see our daughter, my spouse and I are going out west to see our daughter, and we're going to end up in Boise. And that's pronounced Boycee with an S, not Z. If you pronounce it with a Z, you're clearly from out of town. I've learned that. And I have a short meeting with the mayor of Boise, just to sort of chat, talk about a few things, so you can expect some kind of report when I get back on that.
And if you want, I'll give you my sister's number, she lives there.
Oh, well, maybe I'll do that.
Boise is good.
Yes, yes. I, I, I learned to pronounce it correctly about 25 years ago.
I'll bet you did, yeah.
Okay. The next item is, there are no additional agenda items, and just a quick scheduling update to let folks know that I had said last week that we were going to have a discussion of vending items, but that wasn't ready to go forward, and so that dropped off the agenda. I didn't want you to think that just kind of disappeared for no particular reason. And when we, when we come back from our August break, our first meeting is Tuesday, September 7th, the day after Labor Day, and we are anticipating that a good bit of the meeting will be devoted to a discussion of the strategic plan. As a result of the COG Board Retreat, I also felt it would be a good idea to ask the Executive Director of the Council of Governments to come and talk a little bit about the Region Forward Report, an effort that all 21 members of COG have now signed on to, and that's being kind of rolled into COG's strategic plan, and there were some very interesting elements of it that could tie into our strategic plan, so I thought it was a good way to bring what other governments in the region are doing in the way of strategic planning and what our effort is.
On the 7th?
On the 7th. And on the following Monday, the 13th, we've tentatively scheduled a public hearing on the proposed state law change request about alcoholic beverage sales, and there will be a notice going out in the city newsletter with some specifics on that. And if we decide to go forward at that hearing, then there's a resolution for that scheduled for September 27th, which would give us a chance to get that to the state delegation in a timely fashion. So I just want to let folks know the schedule on that. And the city manager and I will be going over a long list of items that have accumulated that need to go on the agenda, and one of those will be some, I, going over some ideas about how best to get community input on the budget going forward. I anticipate that we will try and get those, those meetings, whether they're part of our Monday night meetings, whether they're in addition to Monday night meetings, we will work through some of that, and I solicit your input and ideas on anything that you think would work well. We're going to be working on that over the break in August, and coming up with the schedule and best ideas to put that forward. So any of you who have any ideas, let me know. We're going to be working on it in the next, in the coming weeks. The next item is adoption of minutes.
Mayor?
Yes. Sorry.
When we talk about the tree ordinance, is that going to be the same time that we talk about the street trees, and what selection the arborist has made for street trees, and a review of that?
I'm adding it to the list.
Thank you.
Next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes from April 12th, 19th, 22nd, and 26th, and May 3rd and 10th. Would somebody like to move their approval?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Wright. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are adopted. Next item is public comment period. If anybody would like to make any comments, unless you're hiding out there on the floor between the chairs, I don't see anybody. So we will move along to the city manager's comments.
Good evening. I'll be brief. We've got the report in the package from the city manager with the preliminary financial report and her quarterly update. If you have any questions, please go ahead and send her an email on that, and she can answer any questions you might have. I just want to note that a number of the points that you've made this evening and that I've been hearing over time do have to do kind of with communications in general. I have hired a new media specialist who will start in mid-August. The discussions that we've had to date have been very interesting, and I think we've got a lot to jump on. I appreciate your thoughts as we go forward. I think you will see quickly after that a new webpage and different ways to use social media in a constructive way for us, as, in terms of how we get out information, whether it's not going on your neighbor's door, or, you know, some other kind of thing with your cellphone, so that we really do function well. And I think, looking forward to, we've already got lots of neat ideas on the table, and looking forward to your thoughts, and a lot of feedback as we go forward, so we get it right.
Just to add on that point, I got some feedback about our webpage last week. And that was, it was very positive about our webpage. And the positive aspects were in the transparency and on the depth of information that we have. The, the person who was making the comments was thrilled with the amount of information and the transparency.
Yeah, there's, there's no lack of information out there. Some people have difficulty finding what they need right, right away. And one of the things that's our challenge as staff members is to go glean through all of that data, the stuff that's out of date to get rid of, stuff that's kind of, needs to be kind of in an archive, easily accessible if you need to get there, but otherwise, just not right on the front page. We need to do that, and that's what we're working on. But I appreciate the comment. We are pleased that we have lots of, lots of material to work with. We're just trying to make it work a little bit better.
Great.
I asked a question. The current webpage makes note of the fact that a new webpage is being designed and asks, presents a survey, and I'm wondering if you have gotten, if many people have utilized that survey in offering ideas?
We've gotten some, and, and some very interesting points, but I, I'll need to double-check and see kind of what the results are up to date and, and let you know.
Yeah, at some point, I certainly, I'm sort of feel like I have ideas, and I'm really excited about the idea of, that, that this revisions to the webpage and communications in general are going to be reviewed and modified and hopefully improved, as I'm sure they will be. So I'm looking forward to being able to share some thoughts and ideas. I, I wouldn't be surprised if some other members of this council wouldn't, might feel the same way.
Thank you. We certainly have heard lots of your comments in the past, and, and I think there's going to be a whole lot to come, and I appreciate it, look forward to it.
And so now's a good time.
Well, not this moment.
No.
But please, but please communicate with me.
Sooner rather than later.
Don't get me started.
And, and I'll just add on that, that it was interesting to hear the comments of the County Council Staff Director, who a number of us had the chance to meet with last week, and he indicated that he had gone to our webpage to look for a bunch of financial information about the city and had found it very helpful. Anything else from the?
No.
Okay. Then we will move along to our regular meeting items. The first one is a second reading ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of City of Tacoma Park General Obligation Bond, and this is for the purpose of financing the costs of part of the city's public works facility.
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Snapper. Any council comments? Any public comments? This is a second reading ordinance. Will a court please call a roll? Aye?
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and the city attorney and bank representatives and myself are getting together tomorrow morning at 10:30 to sign all the paperwork and make that happen. Next item is a second reading ordinance adopting the FY11 Ask Me Pay Plan. Would somebody like to move that?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Wright. Any council comment? Public comment? Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next item is a second reading ordinance adopting FY11 Management and Non-Union Staff Pay Plan.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Robinson. Publics? Council comment? Public comment? Court, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. The final of that package of three ordinances is a second reading ordinance adopting the FY11 Police Pay Plan. Would somebody like to move it?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Siemens. Snapper. Any council comment? Public comment? Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously as well. The next item is a resolution requesting that Tacoma Urban Park be renamed as Combe Park. Would Councilmember Robinson like to move it?
I'd like to move that.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Siemens. Is there any council comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously.
Can you, can you note that I abstained?
Okay. Oh, okay. Sorry, you need to point that out. I can't, I can't call for abstentions, you have to note them.
I'm sorry.
And the final item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have seven items on here. I'll just note that we have a first reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a leaf collection vacuum, a resolution providing for summer recess, resolution authorizing city manager to sign grant agreements with both the Independence Day Committee and the Crossroads Farmers Market, resolution authorizing execution of a memorandum agreement with the Old Town Business Association, a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a replacement vehicle for code enforcement, and a single reading ordinance authorizing a renewal contract with Public Policy Partners or Lobbyists. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Since we have single reading ordinances on there, we need to call a roll on the consent agenda. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and we are now on summer break. We're adjourned.